Praise the Lord! Hallelujah! We'll get our microphone up here and we will be waiting here for those wonderful people that want to be in the know about the Book of Revelation, amen? Glory! Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. You're so good to us. Praise God. Amen. We are in session 22 tonight. We won't get started right away. I'm gonna wait for some people to come on here. Sometimes we are right on time and other times we're a little bit late. That's right. It's part of life. And I know we all have real lives. Those of you that have jobs, come home and rush to have dinner and then do what you're doing, I really appreciate the fact that you support what we're doing here. We're just going to go into some praise and prayer here before we get started. Lord, we just praise you tonight. We thank you, Lord, and praise you for your goodness. Thank you, Lord, that ears. Your word will go forth tonight. It will accomplish what you purpose it to do. Thank you, Lord, that faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word of God. Now, how did they hear without a preacher? And how did they have a preacher unless they said, "Lord, you've sent me at this time, for such a time as this, to break the bread of life with my friends here?" So I'm asking, Lord, that you just anoint me, anoint me tonight, anoint me fresh, so that all that I share with my friends here tonight will go into good ground, good ground, that it will not return void, in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen, amen, amen. Of course, we'll wait a little bit, and that's right, those that missed the first part of it can come back to it later, because it will be available on the Internet and it will be available on a website. What I do is, when we're finished, I upload the notes to our website, so they'll be on there later this evening, when you can get them, so that you'll be able to download them if you want to. All right, let's get started. We're in chapter 14, chapter 14 of the Book of Revelation. The Book of Revelation is a book of decision. The earth's inhabitants must choose their eternity. Either they choose life in heaven or an eternity in hell. The choice is between the Creator and the creative. The fourteenth chapter bears out this at the midpoint of the tribulation period. Chapter 13, that we finished last week, revealed the spiritual dimensions behind the events taking place on the earth, leading to the close of the midpoint and the start of the last half of Daniel's 70th week. Satan and his angels lose their place in heaven at the midpoint. Satan inhabits the Antichrist and through his kingdom makes his last stand against Jesus Christ. Satan, the beast or the Antichrist, and the false prophet form an unholy trinity and work in unison to bring the remaining inhabitants of the earth under Satan's control. Good evening, Diana. I'm glad you're with us. Satan uses his own strategies on a grand scale. Through the resurrected Antichrist and the false prophet, military, political, religious, and economic control is exercised on the earth. All who refuse submission to the beast, his kingdom and person are hunted and killed. There will be little hope for those left on the earth, except for the select group of Jews who escaped in the wilderness in Revelation 12. The whole world is under Satan's dominion for the last half of the tribulation, leading to the final confrontation in Israel at Armageddon. God, in his mercy, intervenes on this seamless, hopeless condition of man. In the first half of the tribulation period, God opened a door for those left behind. Through the witness of the hunter and 44,000 Jewish evangelists and the two witnesses in Jerusalem, many of earth's inhabitants hear the gospel. In the second half, evangelism will be done in secret and under the cover of darkness. The 144,000 Jewish witnesses will have been murdered and evangelism of the gospel will be done with a threat of execution. Under these bleak conditions, God demonstrates his love and mercy for humanity. Three angels are sent to warn the inhabitants of the earth to make the right decision. The angels proclaim the gospel and mourn man of earthly and eternal destruction for choosing Satan. Finally, in the fourteenth chapter, the Son of Man is pictured, reaping the final harvest of the tribulation saints who die in this final persecution. This final period ends as the armies of the earth gather the length of Israel. Hey, Ali, glad you're with us. This last day's army of the earth is pictured as grapes entering the winepress of God's wrath, known as Armageddon. Revelation 14, verses 1 through 5. "And I looked, and lo, a lamb stood on Mount Zion, and with him a hundred forty and four thousand, having his father's name written in their foreheads. And I heard a voice from heaven, as the voice of many waters, and as the voice of a great thunder; and I heard the voice of harpers, harping with their harps. And they sung as it were a new song before the throne, and before the beasts and the elders; and no man could learn that song but the hundred and forty-four thousand, which were redeemed from the earth. These are they which were not defiled with women, for their virgins. These are they which follow the Lamb, whithersoever he goeth. These were redeemed from among men, being the first fruits unto God and the Lamb; and in their mouth was found no guile," which means deceit, "for they are without fault before the throne of God. Then I looked." All right. John is seeing with his own eyes and is not talking in metaphors. John is simply recording what he sees. He sees a lamb stood on Mount Zion. The last time John saw Jesus as a lamb was in Revelation 7 and 9, where a great multitude from every nation, tribe, language, and people stood before the lamb and the throne. This multitude was the result of the 144,000 Jewish witnesses who are pictured on earth as opposed to being in heaven. John sees the lamb again, standing on Mount Zion. Mount Zion is one of the four mountains or hills that the city of Jerusalem is built upon. The hills are Zion, Moriah, Accra, and Besar. The walls and buildings of Jerusalem are built around and upon these hills. The question is whether this is a heavenly Mount Zion or an earthly one. Those who view this as heavenly Mount Zion refer to Hebrews 12 and 22, picturing Mount Zion in the heavenly Jerusalem. The location and time of John's vision influences our understanding of the identity of the 144,000 gathered before the lamb. Now, there's a lot of different aspects on the 144,000 here. It says, "with him a hundred and forty-four thousand." The identity and timing of these 144,000 in chapter 14 has been a point of discussion by many scholars. There's two options presented here. First, the 144,000 are the same 144,000 Jewish witnesses from the 12 tribes of Israel in Revelation 7, 1, and 8, and that they're gathered before the throne of God in heaven following their martyrdom. And they're gathered at the end of the tribulation at Mount Zion before the Messiah. That would be the Jewish witnesses. The second one, the 144,000, are part of the church body before the throne, and they are members of the church as opposed to Israel. That's another teaching. Now, Tim LaHaye taught all the Left Behind series. You've probably heard of him. He believes that the church will be out of here before the tribulation happens. So when he teaches, he teaches that this part here are part of the church and that they're distinct from the 144,000 Jewish witnesses. He sees two distinct groups. Personally, I don't see that there's two distinct groups. I believe these are all the Jewish ones. And from all that I've seen, that we've studied so far, we're going to be going through the tribulation. I don't argue about it, but I want you to be prepared for it. That's the main thing. The great multitude in chapters 7, 9, through 17 is a scene of a saved who had been killed for the testimony of Christ during the great tribulation. This multitude will be the fruit of the 144,000. Now, there's gonna be a lot of people die during this time, because it tells us that. First of all, there'll be a third dying, and later another third. But Isaiah 43, 12 and 13, tells us, "I have declared and have saved, and I have showed, when there was no strange God among you; therefore you are my witnesses," saith the Lord, "that I am God. Yea, before the day was, I am he. And there is none that can deliver out of my hand. I will work, and who shall let it or stop it?" When God decides to do it, that's it. You can't go against what he's going to do. Then it says his father's name in verse 1. The same promise is made to all who will be in the presence of God throughout eternity. Same right there with him. In Revelation, chapter 22, let's turn there and look at verses 4 and 5. 22, 4, and 5. "And they shall see his face," excuse me, 21. "And they shall see his face, and his name shall be in their foreheads; and there shall be no night there, and they need no candle, neither light of the sun; for the Lord God giveth them light, and they shall reign forever and ever." Praise the Lord. That is in chapter 21. I apologize.
22 here.
22.
Yes, it is 22.
22, 4, and 5. Yes, 22, 4, and 5, yes. All right. Sorry about that. Tongue gets tangled. Think about that. "They shall see his face, and his name shall be in their foreheads." Remember, the mark of the beast is in the forehead or the hand, but his name will be in the foreheads. That's where your thought life is, isn't it? "And there shall be no night there, and they need no candle, neither light of the sun; for the Lord God giveth them light." Think about that. Then it says, "I heard a voice," back to chapter 14. "I heard a voice from heaven." John is hearing the heavenly choir of the 144,000 gathered in heaven following their martyrdom. That's a mighty big choir. I've been in a chorus of about 200, but 144,000, can you imagine? The point of locating the 144,000 is where the difficulty lies. John hears the song from heaven, and it's the sound of a new song, which none can learn but the 144,000. If only they can learn the song, then they must be singing the song. The sound of harps, those singing are also playing along with harps. Eight and 10-string harps are noted in Psalms. Let's turn to Psalm 144, 9. Psalm 144, 9. Back in the Old Testament a little way, Psalm 144, 9. It says, "I will sing a new song unto thee, O God, upon a salt tree, and an instrument of ten strings, while I sing praises unto thee." Well, that means the harp and on a 10-string instrument could be any kind of thing with 10 strings. Let's read all of chapter 149 in Psalms. It says, "Praise ye the Lord, singe unto the Lord a new song, and his praise in the congregation of saints. Let Israel rejoice in him that made him," Psalm 149. "Let the children of Zion be joyful in their king; let them praise his name in the dance." God's not against you praising him spiritually. It's the other kind of dancing that is, it leads to other kinds of things. "Let them sing praises unto him of the timber and harp; for the Lord takes pleasure in his people. He will beautify the meek with salvation. Let the saints be joyful in glory; let them sing aloud upon their beds." I remember when I was a little girl, I would sing. At night, I'd go to bed and be singing my heart out, and I'd sing and sing and sing. And finally, my mother'd say, "Helen, it's time to go to sleep." But it says, "Let them sing upon their beds. Let the high praises of God be in their mouth, and a two-edged sword in their hand, to execute vengeance upon the heathen, and punishments upon the people; to bind their kings with chains, and the nobles with fetters of iron; to execute upon them the judgment written. This honor have all his saints. Praise ye the Lord." New songs are mentioned nine times in Scriptures, and each instance reflects the realization of God's grace and glory. Back to Psalm, back to Revelation 14. It says, "before the throne," before the throne, Revelation 14, verse 3. This song is, it says, the 144,000 are located before the throne, before the four living creatures and the elders. Then it says, "none could learn their song." This song is unique to the 144,000. They're a distinct group. They are the first fruits of redeemed Israel. We are in Revelation, chapter 14, verse 3. Then it says, "redeemed from the earth." This means to purchase, to redeem, to buy back. The same word is used in the new song in Revelation 5. Revelation 5, 9, and 10 says, "And they sung a new song, saying, Thou worthy to take the book, and open the seals the roof, for thou wast slain, and hast redeemed us to God by the blood out of every kindred, and tongue, and people, and nation; and hast made us unto our God kings and priests; we shall reign on the earth." It's another reason, I believe it's the same 144,000. Those who sing in Revelation 5, good evening, Laura, glad to have you on with us. Those who sing in Revelation, chapter 5, represent, may represent, the church, while these 144,000 represent redeemed Israel. Either way, they're both, one or the other, standing for God, singing and praising. It's gonna be a wonderful time in heaven. "which were not defiled with women." The 144,000 will be wholly dedicated to bringing the lost to Christ. The 144,000 will have a short period to serve the Lord and accomplish the task at hand. Jeremiah faced a similar situation. It was not permitted to marry, permitted to be married. Turn to Jeremiah, chapter 16. Jeremiah, Old Testament, Jeremiah, chapter 16. When God called them, he gave them a hard call, very hard. We will start with verse 1. Jeremiah 16, starting with verse 1. I'll give you a minute to get there. Hello, Marcelo. From Brazil, we're glad to have you on tonight. One thing about the Internet, it makes the world a whole lot smaller. We're studying Revelation 14, but we're reading now out of Jeremiah 16. It says, "The word of the Lord came also unto me, saying, Thou shalt not take thee a wife; neither shalt thou have sons or daughters in this place." It had to be hard. "For thus saith the Lord concerning the sons, and concerning the daughters that are born in this place, and concerning their mothers that bear them, and concerning their fathers that begot them in this land: they shall die of grievous deaths; they shall not be lamented; neither shall they be buried; but they shall be as dung upon the face of the earth; they shall be consumed by the sword and by famine; and their carcasses shall be meat for the fowls of heaven, and for the beasts of the earth. For thus saith the Lord, enter not into the house of mourning; neither go to lament nor bemoan them, for I have taken away my peace from this people, saith the Lord, leaving loving kindness and mercies." What a call Jeremiah had. What a horrible thing to know, that you're gonna preach, and it won't do any good, that God has turned his back on these people and that they were all gonna die and not be remembered. Now, let's speak about back in chapter 14, where it says, "not defiled with women." It's not to say that marriage is defilement. The word "defilement" means to soil, but that, it means these men are single-minded. They will not involve themselves in the concerns of marriage and courtship. They do not have time for those concerns. They come to Christ, and their time in ministry is short and to the point. Jesus refers to those who choose to make themselves eunuchs for the sake of the kingdom of God in Matthew 19 and 12. Let's turn there. Matthew 19 and 12. An eunuch is one that doesn't have the ability to have sex, if anybody doesn't understand it. Matthew 9 and 12. And Jesus was talking about marriage and divorce here, but he goes on to say in 12, "For there are some eunuchs which were so born from their mother's womb; and there are some eunuchs which were made eunuchs of men; and there be eunuchs which have made themselves eunuchs for the kingdom of heaven's sake. He that's able to receive it, let him receive it." In other words, that's the call for them, but it doesn't mean marriage is wrong. The idea of complete dedication is mentioned by Paul also. Turn to 1 Corinthians, chapter 7. 1 Corinthians, chapter 7, and we will read verses 1 and 2. 1 Corinthians 7, 1 and 2. It says, "Now concerning the things whereby you wrote unto me, it's good for a man not to touch or live in marriage with a woman. Nevertheless, to avoid fornication, let every man have his own wife, and let every woman have her own husband." See, God knows there are those that can go without it, but he also knows those that cannot. They need to get married, so they're not living in sin. Back to Revelation 14. "Follow the Lamb." Those who are redeemer will always be with the Lord, following him. 1 Thessalonians 4 and 17 says, "Then we which are alive and remain shall be caught up together with them in the clouds, to meet the Lord in the air; and so shall we ever be with the Lord." That is a fantastic promise, oh, to be, when we get caught up, we'll be with the Lord forever. And Jesus also said in John 14 and 3, "And if I go and prepare a place for you, I will come again and receive you to myself, that where I am, there you may be also." What a wonderful thing to know, that the lover of our soul will never leave us small for savings. The tribulation saints from the great multitude are also promised to be with Christ, and they stand before the throne too. Back up to chapter 7 of Revelation and read verse 15. It says, "Therefore are they before the throne of God, and serve him, day and night in his temple. He that sitteth on the throne shall dwell among them." What a wonderful thing to know. Back to Revelation 14. It says, "these be first fruits to God and to the Lamb." This is foreshadowed in the feast of weeks. That was one of the Jewish feasts, the feast of weeks, and it's held in the fall. Two loaves with yeast are waved before the tavern. These loaves with yeast represent the church and Israel in a prophetic foreshadowing. In Leviticus, chapter 23, verses 15 and 18, it reads, "And you shall count unto you from the morrow after Sabbath, from the day that you brought the sheaf of the wave offering. Seven Sabbaths shall be complete; even unto the morrow after the seventh Sabbath shall you number fifty days; and you shall offer a new meat offering unto the Lord. You shall bring out of your habitations two wave loaves of two-tenth deers; they shall be a fine flour; they shall be baked with leaven; they are the first fruits unto the Lord. And you shall offer with the bread seven lambs without blemish of the first year, and one young bulle, and two rams. They shall be for burnt offering, and their drink offerings even an offering made by fire of sweet savour unto the Lord." So there are those two sheaves up there, those two loaves of bread, and that represents the church in Israel. It says, "they are without faults." That's verse 5, "without fault, without guile." "They are without fault and redeemed, like the rest of those in heaven, as a result of the blood of Jesus." There's no way you can be without fault without that. The point being emphasized is they lived exceptional lives after their conversion. They ministered to the lost, resulting in great multitude in Revelation 7 and 9. I'd like to see that happening on the earth now, where people start witnessing and seeing multitude coming. Revelation 3 and 4, Revelation, chapter 3, verses 4 and 5, says, "Thou isst a few names even in service, which have not defiled their vomits. They shall walk with me in white, for they are worthy. He that overcomeeth the same shall be clothed in white raiment; and I will not blot out their names out of the book of life, but I will confess his name before my Father and before his angels." Then Revelation 7 and 14 says, "And I said to him, 'Sir, you know it.' And he said, 'I mean, these are they which came out of the great tribulation.'" "And washed their robes, and made them white, in the blood of the Lamb." Only through the blood of Christ are we without fault. These redeemed saints are now without fault before the throne of God, being the first fruits of converted Israel which came out of the tribulation. Now, we're gonna talk about some angelic intervention. Following the fall of Satan from heaven, the Antichrist will dominate the world's political and military realms. The false prophet will control the spiritual and economic realms. Residents on earth will be forced to receive the mark in the forehead of the arm, worship the image and the beast. Only death will be the other choice. Now, God extends his mercy to the earth's remaining inhabitants. Through angelic intervention, God offers the earth's inhabitants a clear choice for their future. Three angels intervene. One angel proclaims the everlasting gospel. The second warns of the destruction of rebuilt Babylon. And a third warns those remaining of their eternal doom for making the wrong decision. They must choose death to obtain victory over the beast. These angels warn those dwelling on the earth. Once the earth's inhabitants are warned, people must choose between God and Satan. With the choice being made by the earth's remaining inhabitants, Jesus, as Son of Man, is pictured on the cloud about to reap the harvest of the earth. The fruit of the earth will be reaped, as the wrath of God is poured out on the earth and mankind gathers to make war with God. The first angel wants to speak the everlasting gospel. In Revelation 14, we'll read verses 6 and 7. "And I saw another angel fly in the midst of heaven, having the everlasting gospel, to preach unto them that dwell on the earth, and to every nation, and kindred, and tongue, and people, saying with a loud voice, 'Fear God, and give glory to him, for the hour of his judgment is come; and worship him that made heaven and earth, and the sea, and the fountains of water.'" The other angel means John sees an angel flying between heaven and earth. In the fourteenth chapter, we see six angels. Three are sent to mourn, and three are involved in the harvest of the earth following the mourning. Angelic participation in the realm of man has existed since the fall, but much of the involvement concealed from our eyes, takes place without our knowledge. Now, a few times in Scripture, God reveals angelic intervention in the realm of humanity. First place was in Genesis 3. A fallen angel tempted Adam and Eve to disobey God. And then, in Genesis 3 and 24, angels guarded the Garden of Eden, so man could not return when Adam and Eve got kicked out. Then in Genesis 6 and 4, fallen angels corrupted the seed of man, so all but Noah and his family were destroyed. Then in Genesis 19, two angels were involved in the destruction of Sodom and Gomorrah. In Genesis 28 and 12, angels were seen by Jacob ascending and descending on a stairway to heaven. Then in 2 Kings 6 and 17, angels surround the army of Syria when they come to take, came to take Elisha. angels surround the army of Syria when they came to take Elisha. Well, those angels were right there to fight the battle, amen? Then in Daniel 10 and 13, a fallen angel attempts to prevent a message from reaching Daniel for 21 days, and another angel intervenes to help. Both heavenly and fallen angels tend to work behind the scenes, and only on limited selective basis do they interact openly with humanity. The blueprint of this re-interaction revealed in Ephesians 6 demonstrates an ordered angelic and demonic realm. Let's turn to Ephesians, chapter 6. Hold your place in Revelation, but Ephesians, back up a few books. Ephesians, chapter 6, where we've one verse. Ephesians, chapter 6, verse 12. "For we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of darkness in this world, and against spiritual wickedness in high places." There's different levels of devils, and here they are right here. Principalities, powers, rulers of darkness in the world, spiritual wickedness in high places. And then in the Hebrews 13 and 2, it says, "Be not forgetful to entertain strangers, for thereby some have entertained angels unaware." Satan's supernatural assault on man is countered by an audible and possibly a visible angelic intervention shortly following the midpoint of the tribulation. All right, back to Revelation 14. It says, "In the midst of heaven, three angels now make their appearance in the mid-sky to aid mankind, helping people make the right choice in the hour of decision. The angels and their message will at least be heard by the inhabitants of the earth." The everlasting gospel is preached, we're in verse 6 of Revelation 14. Gospel, of course, means good news or glad tidings. This angel proclaimed the message of the two witnesses, 144,000 of Israel in the church, the good news that Jesus died for our sins, and by faith we receive redemption from our sins. 1 Corinthians 15, 3 and 4, says, "For I delivered unto you first of all that which I also received, how that Christ died for our sins," that's the beginning of the gospel, "according to the scriptures, that he was buried," that's the second part, "and that he rose again, the third day," that's the third part, "according to the scriptures." That's the gospel, that Jesus died, he was buried, and he rose again. And in Romans 16 and 17, it says, "For I'm not ashamed of the gospel of Christ, for it's the power of God and the salvation for everyone that believes it, to the Jupers, and also for the Greeks, for therein is the righteousness of God revealed from faith to faith, as it's written, 'The just shall live by faith.'" Oh, mention the possibility of angelic preaching, and how that preaching by angels must conform to the gospel, excuse me, the gospel already delivered. Let's turn to Galatians, chapter 1. Galatians, chapter 1, let's read what he has to say. Galatians, chapter 1, and we'll start with verse 6. Paul taught, went out and he taught, but they just didn't keep it. And look what he's saying to them. Verse 6, "I marvel that you so soon removed from him that called you into the grace of Christ to a different gospel." In other words, somebody was teaching more than that Jesus died on the cross, and he was buried, and that he rose again. In Galatians, he said, "That's a different gospel when you add anything to it." And he said, "Which is not another," that isn't good news, in other words, "but there be some that trouble you, and would pervert the gospel of Christ. But though we, or an angel from heaven, preach any other gospel unto you, than that which we have preached unto you, let them be accursed, as we said before. So say I now again, if any man preach any other gospel unto you, then that you have received, let him be accursed." And I'm going to tell you what, when the scripture repeats something twice, it's very important. When you don't believe that Jesus died on the cross, or that he's gotten flesh, died on the cross, was buried, and rose again, that's the only gospel that will save you to preach. Now this means to bring good news. The angel was announcing a way of escape to the inhabitants living on earth. Back to Revelation 14. He was proclaiming the good news of mankind. See, all this bad stuff is happening, but God's trying to get their attention. Do you think this year got anybody's attention with all the stuff with this plague that we've had? God is trying to wake us up. Then, back to Revelation 14. Saying with a loud voice. See, in this particular thing, Old Testament, God spoke with a still small voice, but now it's saying with a loud voice, the two Greek words for loud voice, and we're right here in Revelation 14. Saying with a loud voice. That means like a megaphone. I could speak a lot louder than they do, a loud voice, a large voice, phone, noisy. Before God judges, he warns those that are about to be judged, so they have an opportunity to turn and reject the loud, excuse me. It is said that Noah preached for 120 years before the flood. The two angels came to Sodom and Gomorrah, and the men of the city witnessed the angels. Jonah warned Nineveh of their impending judgment. Jeremiah warned Jerusalem. Moses proclaimed the Lord to Egypt. Daniel read the handwriting on the wall before Babylon's fall. And Jesus lamented the coming destruction of Jerusalem. The first of the three angels proclaims to man, in verse 6, "to every nation, kindred, tongue, and people, the way of escape; regardless of the language, the message was universal. Nobody's going to be left out, there's no excuse." Results of the angelic preaching, coupled with the evangelism leading to this point, finally make an impact on some hard souls. Revelation 15 pictures those who listen to the angelic warning and prefer death to worshiping the beast. Many could have openly persecuted the saints in the first half, but the angelic warning breaks through, and they prefer death. These saints are killed for rejecting Antichrist and his kingdom, and they're in heaven before the throne of God, standing on the crystal sea. Look at verse 2 of Revelation 15. "And I saw, as it were, a sea of glass mingled with fire, and them that had gotten a victory over the beast, over his image, over his mark, and over the number of his name, stand on the sea of glass, having harps of God." Second part of angels' intervention. They declare the fall of Babylon. Verse 8 of chapter 14. "And there followed another angel, following, saying, 'Babylon is fallen, is fallen, that great city, because she made all nations drink of the wine of the wrath of her fornication.'" The angel is the second of the sixth angels in the 14th chapter. Saying, "Well, the second angel's visible and audible to the inhabitants of the earth." What about Babylon? The meaning of Babylon, that great city, in Revelation 14, has been interpreted several ways, and we'll learn more about that in chapter 18. But Babylon is a hidden reference to Rome because of the potential persecution, that's one way of looking at it. Second way is Babylon is a reference to the rebuilt city of Babylon, the future capital of the Antichrist. And the third, Babylon is symbolic for the sinful age. Now, the second viewpoint is a more literal understanding, that it's the rebuilt city of Revelation, as confirmed by Old Testament prophecies. Satan is called the king of Babylon, who will be judged after Israel is restored. The Antichrist is ruled by Satan at the midpoint, and with his capital city being a rebuilt Babylon, Isaiah 14 can be seen as being literally fulfilled when Satan is cast bound and cast down and weakened into the abyss, or he's cast bound and weakened into the abyss for a thousand years after the return of Christ. Let's turn to Isaiah, chapter 14. And we're going to read six different verses. Isaiah 14. And we'll start with verse 1 in Isaiah 14. Give you a minute to get there. "For the Lord will have mercy on Jacob, first womb, and will yet choose Israel, and set them in their own land; and the strangers shall be joined with them, and they shall cleave to the house of Jacob; and the people shall take them, and bring them to their place; and the house of Israel shall possess them in the land of the Lord, for servants and handmaids; and they shall take them captives, whose captives they were, and they shall rule over their oppressors; and it shall come to pass, in the day that the Lord should give thee rest from thy sorrow, and from thy fear, and from hard bondage wherein thou wast made to serve, that thou shalt take up this proverb against the king of Babylon." And saying, "How hath the oppressor ceased? The golden city ceased." Verse 9 of chapter 1, 14 of Isaiah. "Hell, from beneath, is moved for thee, to meet yet thy coming; and stireth up the dead for thee, even all the chief ones of the earth, that have raised up from their thrones, all the kings and the nations." Verse 12. "How art thou fallen from heaven, O Lucifer, son of the morning? How art thou cut down to the ground, which did weaken the nations?" Now, Zechariah looked forward to a future day when wickedness will build a house in the land of Babylon. In Zechariah, chapter 5, 5 through 11, this future city will be the economic capital of the world, well over that one in Revelation 18. The worldwide focus on the rebuilding of Iraq could very well be a precursor to the fulfillment of this prophecy. The UN, the US, and Europe, and the world are involved in the rebuilding of Iraq. Part of this rebuilding is to make Iraq secular, not posted to the west in the midst of a Muslim world. The wealth of the world will flow into the region to create a stable oil region. Cyrus the Great, a Persian, defeated Babylon in 539 B.C. But Babylon is a great city slowly disintegrated from its greatness. Alexander the Great died in the city in 333 B.C. This Babylon was a foreshadowing of the coming Babylon that will one day rise, to be destroyed by the Lord. This angel is warning of the destruction of this future world capital that Satan uses to deceive and force the earth to worship the image of the beast. I want to make a comment. Some people believe that the United States is the great Babylon. And with all of the stuff that goes on in our country, from pornography to child trafficking and everything else that's been sent on in the world, there's some discussion that could make that possibility be exactly it. I'm not going to say one way or the other. But I will say, whatever it is, will be destroyed. She made the nations, back to Revelation 14, as a political, military, and religious capital of Satan. New Babylon will force the nations to submit to the system imposed by Satan. The nations will face the wrath of God because they participated in Babylon's fornication. Babylon, from the time of Nimrod, in Genesis 10, 8 and 9, has been used by Satan to oppose God and subvert man. And here in the last days, Babylon plays an end-time role again. Fornication, well, use it metaphorically for idolatry, but it can also mean the world situation we're in now. It's sad. Look at all the things that are happening with sex out there now. Those who accept Satan are viewed by God as fornicators, excepting a lie as the truth. The third angel will send a warning to those who receive the mark. Let's read verses 9 through 11 in chapter 14. "And the third angel followed them, saying with a loud voice, 'If any man worshiped the beast in his image, and receive his mark in his forehead, or in his hand; the same shall drink of the wine of the rap and God, which is poured out without mixture into the cup of his indignation. He shall be tormented with fire and brimstone, in the presence of the holy angels, and in the presence of the Lamb; and the smoke of their torment ascended up forever and ever; they have no rest, day nor night, for worship the beast and his image, and whosoever received the mark of his name.'" Horrible thing to look through, look forward to. Praise God, I don't have to look forward to that because I'm saved. And I'm hoping that there'll be somebody that watches this, and they see these things, and they decide to get saved too. A third angel. Third of the first three angels warns that warn the inhabitants of the earth what will happen if they worship the beast. The loud voice, the sound is an audible warning to the earth's inhabitants. The offense to God is exactly what the Antichrist and false prophet demand the whole earth to do. Worship the beast in his image and receive his mark. God wants people to know what is at stake for submitting to Satan. They will share in the destruction of the beast, which will be poured out in full strength, meaning there'll be no compassion, no holding back of the wrath of God. He shall be tormented. Well, the individual who chooses Satan will be in pain and toil, they will not cease to exist, but will live to suffer in hell eternally. Fire and brimstone, well, the method of their torment will involve fire and brimstone in the presence of the angels and in Christ. Cost is pretty vividly demonstrated for those weighing their choice. The smoke of their torment. Smoke is visible consequence of their torment. Burning in the lake of fire, yet not consumed for the rest of eternity, is what those who are true Satan will have to look forward to. The Greek word means ages and ages. They have no rest, day or night. 24 hours a day, no break, no rest from torment. The three-fold description of their satanic choice is worship the beast, worship the image, and receive the mark of his name. The lake of fire will be the final place where these will dwell among with Satan, Antichrist, and the false prophet. In Revelation 20 and 10, it says, "And the devil that deceived them," see, everything is deception, "was cast into the lake of fire and brimstone, where the beast and the false prophet are, and shall be tormented, day and night, forever." What about assurance to the saints? I like that word. Look at Revelation, chapter 14, verses 12 and 13. "Here is the patience of the saints; here are they that keep the commandments of God and the faith of Jesus. And I heard a voice from heaven, saying unto me, 'Right, blessed are the dead, which die in the Lord from henceforth; yea, saith the Spirit, that they may rest from their labors, and their works do follow them.'" Patience of the saints, well, following the vivid picture of what awaits those who choose to follow Satan, here's a word of encouragement to those who are about to be killed or who are in hiding. John was a model who at an old age was exiled in the island of Patmos for his testimony of Christ. He was patient in his persecution. Look at Revelation, chapter 1, verse 9. Revelation 1 and 9. Talk about patience, most of us don't have much of that. It says, "John, I, John, for also I am your brother and companion in tribulation, and in the kingdom and patience of Jesus Christ, who is in the eye that's called Patmos, for the word of God, and for the testimony of Jesus Christ." Patience is the ability to endure. At the time of trial, the spirit of God strengthens the saints. Praise God for that. Blessed are the dead. The voice could be from God, or one of his great angels that encourages those to make the right choice. This contradicts the world's view of death. Death is just the beginning for a believer. Death will only be a doorway into God's heavenly presence for the believer. Revelation 15 and 2, we read it earlier. "And I saw, as it were, a sea of glass mingled with fire, and them that had gotten a victory over the beast, and over his image, and over his mark, and over the number of his name, stand on the sea of glass, having the harps of God." One scene is eternal torment with fire, brimstone for ages and ages, the other standing in the presence of God with harps and their victors over Satan. The difference that separates these two is choice. Satan or Jesus. The same choice people face today. Today, the choices are veiled. In the great tribulation, in the second half of Daniel 70 weeks, Satan will openly demand worship in the person and kingdom of the Antichrist. Satan will openly demand worship in the person and kingdom of the Antichrist or the beast. In Revelation 13, eight and 14, it says it. "Yes, says the Spirit, the words are seconded by the Holy Spirit, which further encourages those on earth to make the right choice." About rest from their labors. One of the greatest hindrances for people coming to Christ is accepting salvation as a gift. You cannot earn or labor your way into the kingdom of God. Many who go through the tribulation might not feel worthy of salvation, or they may feel the need to redeem themselves before they can be accepted into heaven. Maybe many were involved in the killing of saints in the early part of the tribulation. Paul, for example, watched over the coats of those that were stoning Stephen. Many who are participants in the first half might feel that God will accept, might feel God will accept them into the kingdom, but here the Holy Spirit encourages the lost, but not yet receive the mark to receive salvation. Their works follow. What's done for the Lord is not done in vain. Believers can expect a reward for their works in heaven. And the message is echoed in Hebrews, chapter four, verse nine and 10, it says, "There remaineth therefore a rest for the people of God; for he that has entered his rest, he also ceased from his own works, as God did for his." Verses 14 through 16, we're going to talk now about the Son of Man reaps the harvest of the earth. I like this part. "And I looked, and beheld a white cloud; and upon the cloud one sat like the Son of Man, having on his head a golden crown, and in his hand a sharp sickle; and another angel came out of the temple, crying with a loud voice to him who sat on the cloud. Thrust in your sickle and reap, for the time has come for thee to reap, for the harvest of the earth is ripe. And he who sat on the cloud thrust in his sickle on the earth, and the earth was reaped." The white cloud, the word cloud significant in both Old and New Testament. First appearance of a cloud in Scripture follows Noah's flood. God uses the rainbow in a cloud as the sign of his covenant with the earth. Sign and never use a flood to destroy our flesh. And the cloud has meaning throughout Scripture. In Exodus 13 and 21, the Lord appears in a cloud to lead Israel by day, and in a column of fire at night in Sinai. And in First Kings eight and 10, when the temple was built, the glory of the Lord filled the temple in the form of a cloud. And in Isaiah 44 and 22, it says, "A cloud is used to picture the blotting out of the sins of Israel." And in Daniel 7, 13, it says, "The Son of Man is pictured coming on the clouds of heaven," in Daniel. And Matthew 17 and 5, the Father's voice came out of a cloud admonishing the disciples to hear the Son. That was at the Transfiguration. Said, "Listen to him. He has something to say." Came out of a cloud. And in Luke 21 and 27, Jesus promises to come with clouds and power in great glory. In Acts one and nine, Jesus was taken up in cloud and will return in cloud. Then it says, "One like the Son of Man." The title Son of Man is used 82 times in the New Testament as a title for the Messiah. The first occurrence in a Mesianic text was in Daniel 7, 13, which says, "I saw in the night visions, behold, one like the Son of Man came on the clouds of heaven, and came to the ancient of days, and they brought him near before them." Jesus calls himself the Son of Man, meaning he is a descendant of mankind, highlighting his humanity so he can fulfill his destiny as the nearer kinsman redeemer. The Son of Man is pictured with a gold crown and a sharp sickle. The gold crown represents the kingship of Messiah, and the sickle represents his judgment. Jesus referred to harvest as a metaphor for the harvest of souls. Man is pictured as wheat, grain, and weeds. The righteous are referred to as the harvest of edible useful grain, while the lost are viewed as shaft and weeds. A sickle is an instrument used to reap the harvest. When I was a little girl, in fact, we still have it, a sickle is what they use to cut the grass with. It's very sharp blade. Jesus referred to this future harvest in the parable of the wheat and the tares. In this parable, Jesus explained that at the end of the age, the tares would be gathered to be burned. The harvest is only at the right time, because if harvested too early, wheat may be lost. Let's turn to Matthew 13. Little more to go, and we'll be done for tonight, but I wanted to do the whole chapter. Matthew, chapter 13. Keep your finger in Revelation. Matthew, chapter 13, verse 20. It says, "Let both grow together unto the harvest; and in the time of harvest, I will say to the reapers, gather ye therefore first the tares, and bind them in bundles, to burn them; but gather the wheat into my barn." And then also in verse 43, it says, "Then shall the righteous shine forth, as the son and the king of their father, who have ears to hear, and hearing to hear." The sickle separates the plant from the ground. It's in the ground, cuts it up. The cut plant can be harvested or thrown into the fire. Jesus, the Son of Man, is sitting and waiting for the right time to harvest the field of the earth. Satan is used to separate the wheat from the tares by forcing people to make a choice for eternity. Under the threat of death, the weeds or the tares now are being identified. Here Jesus is about to harvest the souls of the great tribulation, as they choose death in Christ rather than worship the beast. Another angel, back to chapter 14, verse 15. "John watches as another angel comes out of the heavenly temple, which the earthly temple was modeled after. The angel cries with a loud voice to the Son of Man, that the time for harvest has arrived, he's not ordering, but he's heralding the time of harvest. The only reluctance removing the weeds before this time was in doing so, some of the wheat may be uprooted. Many children born and saved were born and parents not saved. The time of harvest begins when the plant stops growing and will begin to decay. This will be the situation on earth. This is the situation on earth. Angels will need to present the gospel because of man's state. The harvest is right, the earth is right. In the second half of the tribulation, the saints will be killed and broken. All hope will seem lost. Most saints will be dead, or they'll be in hiding in the second half of the tribulation. And at the right time, those on earth will be reaped or judged. The earth was reaped. The earth will be reaped of both saints and sinners. Here the Son of Man is a sickle waiting for the harvest to reap. This harvest is the reaping of souls to eternal life. In verse 17, the second angel is pictured with a sharp sickle. His harvest is the harvesting of those who turn from Christ and reject the warning of the angels. This harvest is reaped at Armageddon, when the nations are gathered, and Jesus Christ returns with the armies of saints and angels. Revelation 19 and Revelation 20. Those who choose Satan over Christ will be harvested for judgment. Verses 17 through 20. "Then another angel came out of the temple, which is in heaven, he also having a sharp sickle; and another angel came out from the altar, which had power over fire, and cried with a loud cry to him who had the sharp sickle, saying, 'Thrust in thy sharp sickle, and gather the clusters of the vine of the earth, for her grapes are fully ripe.' And the angel thrust his sickle into the earth, and gathered the vine of the earth, and cast it into the great winepress of the wrath of God; and the winepress was trodden down without the city, and blood came out of the winepress, even under the horses' bridles, by the space of one thousand six hundred furlongs." These are the fifth and sixth angels of chapter 14. The angel with the sickle represents the role that the angels will play in the harvest of the earth. In Matthew 24 and 31, it says, "And he shall send his angels with a great sound of a trumpet, and they shall gather together his elect from the four winds, from one end of heaven to the other." The another angel, the sixth angel of chapter 14 comes from the altar. This could be the same angel who took fire from the altar and filled the censer, in Revelation eight and five. Power over the fire. This word is used 25 times in the book of Revelation. Fire is used to judge and purify. The vine of the earth. Man, left alone to his nature without God's intervention, would be putrid. Here the nature of man described as the vine of earth has reached the point of judgment. This is in contrast to the harvest of the earth in verse 15, which the Son of Man reaps. The earth will be judged in the great winepress of the wrath of God. The instrument of judgment will be Israel. In the end, it seems as if Israel as a nation will be like the light to the insect. They will be drawn to the light to make war with it. Somehow, Israel as a nation and people will at the end resist the armies of the world. Zechariah describes this as a supernatural power. This might be the draw to the nations. In Zechariah 12 and eight, it says, "In that day, the Lord shall defend the inhabitants of Jerusalem; and he that is feeble among them at that day shall be as David; and the house of David shall be like God, as the angel of the Lord before them." Now, Micah, a little book of the Bible, also sees Israel as imparted as the Lord to defeat her enemies, which are the Gentile nations gathered against her. And of course, in the end times, they're going to all come and gather around Israel to try to destroy it. In the end, it's Israel coming to Jesus as Messiah that will save her from the satanic-inspired nations. In Micah, chapter four, 11 through 13, it says, "Now also many nations are gathered against thee, that say, Let her be defiled, and let her eye look upon Zion; but they knew not the thoughts of God. Neither understood they his counsel; for he will gather them as the sheaves into the threshing cloth, and rise and thresh, O daughter of Zion; for I will make thine horn iron, and I will make thy hooves brass; thou shalt be beaten pieces, many people; thou will consecrate their gain unto the Lord, and their substance unto the Lord of the whole earth." Nations will be gathered in battle against God. The judgment that follows is described as a winepress. And one is a winepress, it's a tub or trough-shaped receptacle or vat in which grapes are trodden. The way juice was extracted, extracted from the wine was to gather the grapes in a vat and to crush them on your foot. He separated the juice from the skin and allowed the juice to flow. This is a metaphor for the gathering of the nations which will allow their judgment. Revelation 19 and 15, and it says, "And out of his mouth bows a sharp sword, that with it he might smite the nations; and he shall rule them with a rod of iron. He treads the winepress of the fierceness and wrath of Almighty God, where? In the city of Jerusalem. Hatred of the Jews and misery by the kings of the earth will be the result of demonic possession. These demonic, these demonic-possessed kings will lead the armies of the earth to Jerusalem. By their march to Jerusalem, the vine of earth will be reaped." In Revelation 16 and 13, it says, "And I saw three unclean spirits like frogs come out of the mouth of the dragon, out of the mouth of the beast, and out of the mouth of the false prophet; for their spirits and devils work in miracles, which go forth into the kings of the earth, and of the whole earth, and gather them to the battle for that great day of God Almighty." It's coming at time, Israel will get their reward, and so will the Christians. Zechariah 12 says, "And in that day will I make Jerusalem a burdensome stone for all peoples; all that burden themselves with it will be cut in pieces, till all the people of the earth are gathered together against it." Of course, the blood came out. And I want to mention this about a furlong. A furlong is about 600 feet. 1,600 furlongs is 181 miles, and it's approximately the length of Israel from the north to the south. That's a mighty big winepress. Blood will flow as the armies of earth are dissolved if they return to Messiah. So, it will close with this verse out of Joel. "For behold in those days, and at that time, when I shall bring back the captives of Judah and Jerusalem, I will also gather all nations, and bring them down into the valley of Jehoshaphat; and I will plead with them for my people and for my heritage, Israel, when they have scattered among the nations and parted my land." Long lesson tonight, but I wanted to do that whole chapter. Make sure, wherever you are, wherever you are, that you have your heart right with God. Know that he's with us. Until next week, this is Helen Sanders saying God bless.